Good evening and welcome to the Town Douglas Planning Board meeting for Thursday, February 9th, 2023. Time is 7:00 PM. First item, Citizens Forum, call for public comment. Anyone here for that item? Seeing...anyone on Zoom here for Citizens Forum? Seeing no hands. A and R is 57 U Street, Rachel Perkins and Paul Miller. Mr. Benoit, do you have any comments before the... Oh, okay. Someone's presenting. You are muted, I think. Muted yourself. Yeah. We cannot hear you.
You're unmuted, but your volume might be down on your machine.
I hate that, the permissions. Mr. Benoit, looks like he has no comments, right?
Well, the good news, Madam Chair, is that...
The A and R meets the requirements of regulations.
Okay. All right. Board, any questions? No, no. What is Parcel A?
Good question. Parcel A is a driveway to the Perkins lot across the back. This used to just run over the land. Call it a gentleman's agreement, so to speak. So this eliminates that, but it's not a conforming law, so it's labeled appropriately as not considered as an overland law.
And it could be still used as a driveway?
It is a driveway. The only change that they had to make from what's in your packets to what's here is we had to add two additional...many more signature lines.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R.
Second?
Yep, 57 U Street for Rachel Perkins and Paul Miller.
Motion made by Mr. Sokrat, seconded by Mr. Marx. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, well, we could have heard you. You're welcome. Have a good night. Next item, public hearing. Application for accessory apartment. In accordance... In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, the Town Douglas Accessory Apartment Zoning Bylaw, Section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application for David and Dallas Keeney regarding an accessory apartment special permit. The property location is 13 U Street, assessors map 198 Parcel 24 Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held on Thursday, February 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit www.douglas-ma.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. A copy of the application is available for review during normal business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., 01516. Okay, who is here presenting for this project? Oh. Yeah, I think so. Hold on one moment, please. Are we muted? Is that...is the TV muted? Okay. Okay. Okay, and Mr. Sokrat, you said that this was all set?
It meets all the requirements for footage. It looks like an accessory apartment should be seen to be drawn to, you know, support this.
Any other board, yes?
One comment, this was an approved accessory apartment by this board. This is just ownership.
Oh, okay.
That's why they're...
Okay, all right. Very good. Even better. Okay.
If she can hear us. Can you see if we can hear you?
Test, could you say something? Can you hear us? No? Oh, no. I don't know.
I can hear you a little bit now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, we were just reviewing. Did you want to speak on this application?
Is there anything I need to answer about it for you?
I don't think that appears to be the case. Everything looks in order and it's already been approved previously, so if board members don't have any other comments, I'll entertain a motion to grant the special permit. Oh, any butters? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zwicker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was that to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Aye.
To grant.
I'm making a motion to grant the accessory apartment application, A-230109, 13 U Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg, seconded by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Next item on the agenda is additional business, Pine, Sand and Stone Earth Removal Permit Extension for Area E. Who would like to present? Name and address.
Margaret Riscle, Pine, Sand and Stone, One Lackey Dam Road, Douglas. We come before the board to do our annual renewal for Area E. It's been probably ongoing for about almost 10 years. So we're getting to the end of things. We have another 120,000 yards of material to excavate. We'd like to move into a slightly different area of the pit. That's what the plan shows and that's what we're asking for.
Okay. Thank you. Board, any questions? Does Andy have anything?
I don't think so.
All right.
Want a motion to grant the one-year extension?
Yes.
For permit?
Yeah.
ER-14-0129 for Pine, Sand and Stone. And that is Area E.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Accessory apartment extension, 94 Pine Street. Mr. Benoit, any issues with the extension request?
I did not have any issues here. This was one of the larger ones in which we granted a waiver over a 900 square feet.
Okay.
They're just going to have a different tenant put it as part of the covenant.
Okay. Board, any comments or concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion to grant the extension.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zwicker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. LPA hours FEMA map.
Madam Chair, we have two late additions to the agenda. It's totally up to you if you want to take these or not. But respectfully ask if we can move down to 8A.
Okay, lot releases?
Yes.
Okay.
Lot release sum that you may have in your packets. It's a request that we received from Kathleen Windsor, document dated February 7th. I believe the owners of the property are here to sign.
Okay.
So we have a little bit of an odd situation here. So this was a private compound for a three-lot subdivision. It started in 2006. This particular home already has a house on it, but the lot was never released from covenant. I don't know how that wasn't cut the first time you bought the property, but it wasn't. But now I think it's the time where you're trying to sell the property.
Yeah.
And the title examiner cut.
Okay.
One of the questions that came up was regarding drainage. I was speaking with Ms. Schlesman about this kind of work when the meeting started, and I was curious whether or not the drainage would still be governed once the lot is released and it is governed by homeowners association seemingly in perpetuity. So that seems to be covered. The issue I have is that there is no bond for this project. The collateral that the board has for the road to be finished was the lots. And there's three lots. One of them was not part of the covenant because the developer lived at that house, lives at that house. So the house that was constructed, and there is one more vacant lot. So if the board wishes to release this lot, the only collateral we hold is the other lot, which is undeveloped and has not been built on. I don't see any issues with that. I just want the board to be aware of the situation.
Okay, what is the status of the road as far as finish?
It is poor.
Okay. And it services the two homes or just?
Just two.
Okay.
So the developer should finish that road, and if that road is not finished, in the opinion of this board, we could seize Lot 2 and sale through auction.
Do you have a particular value of the improvement to that road at all?
No, but it is something the board may want to pay attention to moving forward. I doubt it's been developed or we may want to send a letter to the developer asking for an update.
Yes. And what's the safety of the roadway to this home?
To this home?
Yes.
We don't have any.
I don't see a major issue there.
No issues?
No issues.
Okay.
Let me ask another question, just because I wanted to know something. When the owners bought the house, should have been caught at that, too.
It should have been caught before building permit was issued.
Oh, absolutely. And all of that, I mean, I was just curious how that just happened.
It was the boom, too. It was the boom.
People moving fast.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's fair that we release this one lot and then request an update.
How many years has it been?
At least almost 20, probably.
Project was approved and covenant established 2006.
I mean, after that many years, I think definitely look at what's going to cost to finish that road. We have the teeth in that last lot, right?
Yeah.
That's all we have left.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, honestly, releasing the lot's no problem, I think. Finding out what's going to go on here is, should be a priority. After that, because before long, you're going to have a gravel road. It's only got two bays down or whatever, it's going to be under marbles.
That's all it is now.
You said that there is, sorry. There's a homeowners association? And has there been any funds, you know, like homeowners for maintenance or anything? You mean that's towards improvement? It's not under our...
It's required in the homeowners association when it was set up, but we wouldn't know any money. But they would be responsible for maintenance.
Sure, all of them collectively.
Anyway, yeah.
Right, and that's in the agreement.
Yeah. So that's another thing that if the road is in ill-repair, they do have the responsibility to maintain and repair it on their own. So it's, there's two
Right.
Two Band-Aids there.
The chair, so there's, but there's only one house.
Two.
Two.
But that will not be part of this, correct?
No, they will. So the developer has one, and then this number four is the second one. So there are two houses in that homeowners association. So if the road needs to be repaired, it would be their responsibility to pay for it.
But that covenant, I don't believe, is in any of their documentation from when they purchased that home.
It may not be, but it is recorded.
Yeah, it's recorded.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is we've got the one lot. Let's just say if it needs to be repaired, if we have that one lot, if they want to come and build, have a building permit, they need to repair the road. But we also have this homeowners association that is set up that's firm that they need to put money in to repair, say, a catch basin or something like that.
Right. So the new owners will have to be aware of the fact that this is in a homeowners association if they are not currently aware of that.
And it's in their deed.
It's in their transfer.
Yes.
Covenant's not typically referenced in the deed because the covenant's, lots usually released before we get that far, so.
Yes.
Get a letter out to the...
So I will entertain a motion to release Lot 1.
In the Northwood subdivision?
Yep.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marx. All those in favor?
Aye.
And one exception, Mr. Schulzberg. Okay, good luck.
I will get her a letter in response to the record of his actions.
Oh, you get it?
Yes.
Thank you, people.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, one other item that's not in the radar? I have a letter from Attorney Henry Lane, dated February 8th. This board, Lakewood Estate Subdivision is the former subdivision under the AMP Solar project of Lake Road. This board voted to rescind that subdivision in 2020. However, the covenant was not rescinded. So a little bit of a housekeeping item for us to remove the covenant that is still governing lands that, for a subdivision, that was rescinded.
Okay. Go for it.
So moved.
To rescind the covenant for Lakewood Estate subdivision? Yep, pause.
What is the genesis of the request?
Probably title. There's a solar farm there.
Okay.
They got found going through a title deal. Yeah.
Hey, there must be a smarty pants somewhere picking all these things up. Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by, was it Mr. Sokrat?
Sure.
Did you second it?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have for unscheduled.
Okay. LPA hours FEMA map.
Okay, so latter last meeting, last year, December 8th, we discussed some modifications to a FEMA bylaw recommended to us by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the state. One of the questions that came up, I believe Ms. Sharkey asked this from the Zoom, was if we could petition CMRPC for any sort of technical assistance to help with this. While we can't get technical assistance to help with the bylaw revision itself, CMRPC did offer to update our FEMA map. Now, it's not something that DCR says that we need to do, but ours hasn't been updated since 2007. And I just took a whole bunch of maps down in the community development meeting room that were from 1994. And I'd like to put some nice, fresh things on the walls, and this might be a good one. So knowing we only get 12 hours a year, Matt Franz at CMRPC said he could allocate three hours for it. We still have nine hours left for technical assistance for other items as needed.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because people look at it, they're looking at wrong information, what good is it?
Right.
You know, it's scrawny, bro.
So I, instead of answering them, I was hoping the board would provide a motion so I could make it more official.
I'll make a motion to allow new maps be made for the ComCom room.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schulzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sounds exciting.
Do we have to do any more discussion on the floodways?
Yes, we can cover that in bylaws and regulations if you'd like.
That's not the end of it.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
All right, bylaws and regulations.
Okay, so. So the, what we were able to get was, or at least last meeting, in between our last meeting and now, I submitted our Section 8.3 to the Department of Conservation and Recreation. They provided us with feedback. And you'll see these in this heavy printout we have here, some of their comments in the columns to the right. I don't know if it printed the way I wanted it to, but ultimately, they made a lot of recommendations here that you'll see, hopefully in color, on some of these
Yeah, color.
Changes that they're recommending. So it's the model bylaws on top, and then their recommendations to Section 8.3 are the last few pages.
How about ours?
Yes. I have made many of these changes and resubmitted back to them. I submitted it on Monday, hoping that they would get back to me with some feedback before this meeting, but they did not. So what's good here is that they are going to provide us with the review process. And once they are okay with it, I'm going to bring a, let's see, call it 90% complete bylaw to us to put the finishing touches on it. The mandatory requirements are certain definitions, certain dates, and those changes have been made. And I was just looking for their feedback on a couple of other items.
So the blue highlight is...
Comments from DCR.
No, that's on the side.
Yep.
Blue highlights on the pages is what stuff that's been added?
No, that's what they're referring to with their comments.
Okay. And what's the red all about?
And some of the red are definitions that need to be removed or it's just their comments. So when you see this page, it starts with a red text on the header, it's like the second to last page. They list a lot of the components that need to be either added or removed. And that's a lot of the stuff I took care of already.
Took care of how?
I added it into the new master document, removed the definitions that no longer needed to be necessary, added the ones that we didn't have, and I sent her that document for their review. So those are the mandatory things that we need to get out. And then if there's things that we want to add after the fact, happy to do that with you guys. But I was really hoping to get their comments back before the meeting today. Fortunately, did not. However, it's good to know that they're acting as a reviewing authority for us.
Perfect.
We're going to lean on that as much as we can. The issue is, I forget exactly what it is, but we have to, we have to put this in front of Springtown or else we lose...and I'm forgetting what it's called. But we lose some sort of status with the state for having these things updated. There's 14 towns doing this concurrently with us. So that's when the Quinabog watershed, all 14 of them are doing this at the same time, including us. This will have to be ready for Springtown meeting, and I anticipate it will be. More of an update, more than interactive work for us this evening.
Good start.
Yeah, it was more than I expected.
Yeah, 2007. And then the rules and regs, printout?
Everyone now should have a copy.
Mm-hmm.
I still can't believe we're in the Quinabog watershed. I know. Where's that?
Okay, any ongoing development updates?
Yes. First one on that list is Blue Wave Solar at Oak Street. They have started setting up their road control measures. We engaged two different consultants, one from Conservation, our Alan from Ecotec, and Haley Ward, Doug Bush, who we've been using from Land Art Engineering for many of our review projects, to review on our behalf as the planning board. They both did their first site inspection so far. We noticed some issues with erosion control measures. I'm sure they brought this up at Conca. And one of the neighbors called with some concerns about some sheet flow, and they had to go back out and make some corrections. Ultimately, the update is, is we now have two conservation specialists and a engineer monitoring the project for us from the beginning that will continue to provide us updates throughout construction. That's, that's that one anyway.
Got a lot of eyes on it.
Very much so. And including residents in Sutton or Oxford, whatever.
It's Sutton. Yeah, Crawf.
Otherwise, Evergreen Estates made it back onto this list. That's Thomas Circle off of South Street. The only reason that it's made this back on the list, if that was proper English, is someone's interested in it. Someone is interested in acquiring it and finishing it. I guess that's been sitting defunct for quite some time. I wouldn't know as well as you all would, but that's a lot of road and stormwater management that's been sitting untouched for many years.
Yeah, quite a few years.
Yeah. Also been identified that its basins have been full, sacks have been full. You guys might have even went out recently and cleared those. I could be wrong. There's, salt sacks are overflowing, water sending it into South Street, possibly compounding some of the drainage issues that we already know about over there.
Yeah, I cleaned the two catch bases at the end of this development just the other day.
Yeah, there you go.
And I removed the bags, so they're taking water now.
That's good. So coming off that development, it's supposed to go underground and into a system across the street, but it's been sheet flowing right down the street and going down South Street towards some of these other areas. I'm not saying that's solving a South Street problem that we know that we have, but it's definitely going to help. But I only brought that up because someone's finally interested in purchasing it, and I'd love to see that happen. Yeah. Nice to see that get finished, someone. But in the conversations we had, they were looking at doing a 55-plus community without an affordability component. Now, what was approved includes affordability under our flex development bylaws. A lot of communities for 55-plus bylaws have an option to, instead of doing affordable component, to contribute funds to an account of the town. More like paying to not have to do affordables. Natick has it, many, many communities have it. We don't have such a bylaw. So it's possible that these folks that are interested in this property may be pitching to us a draft 55-plus bylaw with an equation in it to add, so that they contribute to a fund and avoid the affordability component. Just want to give the information. I'm not sure how I feel about that, given we're so far under the 10%. We need the affordable components in our developments, so losing it is
Not helping.
counterproductive. But...
Sorry, through the chair, Matt, what would that money be earmarked for?
Usually it goes into a housing production plan trust or something for acquiring properties. But we don't have a land bank committee or anything like that, so we'd have to get pretty creative with it. I'm the town administrator for that.
One time we worked with, developed in the same scenario, and it was supposed to be used for drainage in sidewalks, stuff like that, in other parts of the town.
Right.
So you can use that money for repairs anywhere.
That doesn't help the spirit of what they're trying to accomplish.
10% is an unattainable goal, so.
Yeah, and I didn't know 55-plus required the affordable housing units.
It doesn't, our flex bylaw does.
Right. Yeah, so if we adopted, because we had a draft 55-plus last year, so we should really adopt the 55-plus because I don't think you can get around that, that approved special permit as it's written to do, to switch it around.
Right, without coming back to program of...
Yeah, yeah. So I think that we focus on doing the, I mean, we need, we need older housing also. I mean, 55 is not old, but...
I have no objection to that.
We need that housing also.
That's what's going on there, just so we're all aware.
Yeah, no, I think that assisting something that works with the numbers. I mean, it is a long roadway, and if they can fix the infrastructure that's aged and get the aging population some housing, I think that would work. So if we could maybe adopt, have that ready for spring, maybe.
I don't know if we could, only because...
It's a lot of components.
We don't have a housing production plan for one. All right, that really hurts us. But we're talking about a two-month turnaround on a bylaw. It's going to feel rushed by the time it's a town meeting for, you know? So far, I've rushed bylaws three times. I don't want to do it again.
Yeah, we did start looking at it, right?
Yeah.
Because there was, I don't know if it's the same group, but it was a group of people that came in and asked about
I saw it briefly.
I don't know if it's the same group purchasing it or not.
It's not.
No, it's not. It's a different group, okay. So, yeah, we really should work on doing that. And you're right, there are a lot of com... And you're right, there are a lot of components to it. I don't know, I, I never liked rushing bylaws just to get them done for an annual meeting.
Because you always.
It should be done in, right, the town meeting because it's done and not rushed.
Yeah, with, with housing and affordability, I like to run those sorts of things by consultants that deal with that stuff on a regular basis. So that might be something we're looking for funding for, I don't know. We do have to update our master plan at some point, and that stuff goes hand in hand. So.
They could always do citizens petition, or they could.
That's what they might do.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we've got, all the surrounding towns have 55-plus. I mean, Oxbridge has a very good one, they've had, they have multiple 55-plus communities, so we're similar, I mean, they're more commercial, but.
Get a copy of their bylaw and see what.
Just, I mean, they're most alike to us.
It works.
If you physically go there, yeah, you can see that it was a successful project.
Yeah.
And we don't currently prohibit 55-plus, it's something they could do, it's just, our flex has that affordability component with no other alternative. And it's something we can waive because it's in the zoning law.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We can move it to subdivision regs, we can waive it.
They could go to ZVA.
Could do that, too.
Okay. Anything else?
None ongoing development.
Okay, meeting minutes. Has anybody reviewed?
How's Whiten's making out? Never know. Should be wrapping up pretty soon.
Yeah, they, we still left about, what, 24,000 in the bond account? So that's, that's sitting until they can do their final items in the spring, and then they're going to have to pitch to the selectmen prior to October 1st to get the road for acceptance next May, in 2024.
I understand.
So they got a little time, yeah. But, yeah, we're still holding about 25K just for those little button-up items.
What are we talking about last?
Meeting, Whiten's.
Was a letter sent out?
I took a write-up here the other day, they've come a long way.
Yeah, that's why I was just asking how they're working on going for the road and all that kind of stuff, you know? And was the road, through the chair, was a letter sent out to, out on Route 16, about to drive through the window in the parking lot?
I believe, yeah, I believe it came, I believe I sent an email through, so, yeah. I'll double-check that.
Okay.
I might put a letter.
Riverun had time to review the minutes of October 13th?
I did 13, October 13th.
All right.
Everybody else have objection or anything? I'll make a motion for October 13th.
I think we've got a couple type O's.
Yeah, under additional business cemetery completion letter, third line down buffer zone, sorry, buffer zone, one of our major concerns, if should be is.
Okay.
And then continue in that sentence just for the Baker Cemetery, because there is a gravel pit right there. There should be an A in there. Okay.
All right. Mr. Greco, did you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of October 13th, 2022, as amended.
Motion made by Mr. Greco?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't think, I think the other ones are brand new to us, the other meeting minutes.
Okay. You want to hold till the next meeting?
Yeah, unless somebody else has looked out. I'm seeing them jumping out, but might as well wait.
You can call it.
I am seeing them jump out, so I'll make a motion to approve the October 27th meeting minutes.
Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that the one you were asking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know there was one where you joined late, so I don't know if that was that one there.
No, I think I was absent.
Okay.
The next one, the December one, I think I was.
How did we start?
Oh, then I came here, I was absent.
You're on this.
Late.
I don't know if it was this one or another one.
I don't know, I don't, I don't remember, I would have remembered this, Mr. Burnett, because that was a lawsuit. Yeah, no, I definitely wasn't at this one.
Just want to add, the chair, this Goslin does a nice job.
Yes, she does.
Really verbatim, I know she has a recording likely, but it is really good.
Yes, yes, we appreciate her.
This is on November 10th. First page.
Chapter 37.
4B.
4B, our consultant from Leinard Engineering.
Which one do you want?
November 10th? Yeah, 4B on November 10th. It's Leinard, right?
Yeah. Oh, that's such a little thing, though.
It is. I know it, David Menards, it can't be him. Good catch there. November 10th, I'll make a motion to approve, as amended, Leinard.
Survey by Mr. Schulzberg, seconded by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Madam Chair, one other thing?
Yes.
It snuck into our packet. Our last meeting, we had received correspondence about a property in town that was intent to convert Chapter 61 Bland.
Yes.
And it was an incomplete submission to us at the time.
Yes.
So the letter was amended and, well, ultimately, the selectmen got to it before us, and they voted to, not to pursue the property, and that letter was included in your packet, just wanted to explain.
Okay, very good. Entertained motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, two adjourned.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schulzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.